The regular meeting, City of Joliet, Tuesday, December 6th, preceded by Mayor Robert Oberkirk, Ober, Odakir, didn't think it was that hard to say. We'll start with the prayer from Father Chris Groh.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you generously bestow your gifts in abundance, and we are so grateful for all that you continue to do for us, and for the many favors you grant each day. We come together in your name, and we ask that you may be with us, so that everything we do may begin with your inspiration and with your wisdom. God of wisdom and justice, through you, all authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgments are decreed. Guidance support our mayor, the members of our city council, the city manager, and our city staff. Give them the strength to know your will, so that all decisions they make may be pleasing to you. May their work be conducted with righteousness, and may they always promote what is good for the good and welfare of the citizens of our fair city. We likewise commend to your care all of the residents of the City of Joliet, that they too may be blessed and sanctified. Together may we all work for the betterment of our community, and enjoy the blessings promised to those who remain faithful to you. For we pray to you, who are our one Lord and God, now and forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Hayes.
Mayor Odakir.
Here.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Here.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Here.
Councilman Gurl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Mudrin.
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Here.
Councilman Turk.
Here.
First on the agenda is a presentation by the Civil Air Patrol regarding changing out flags for the City of Joliet. Could you come forward?
Hello, and thank you for allowing us to address you today. I am Captain Valerie Espinelli with the Civil Air Patrol. I am the deputy commander cadets with the Shorty Powers Composite Squadron out of Clough Airport in Bolingbroke. I am here today as a representative of both my home squadron and our sister squadron, which operates out of Lewis University. I want to give you a brief history of Civil Air Patrol for those who may not be familiar with our program. CAP was founded in December 1941 by citizens committed to using civilian aviation resources to help our nation's defenses. We are congressionally chartered and operate as a 501(c)(3) organization. We are designated as the Air Force Auxiliary, and have three primary missions: emergency services, cadet programs, and aerospace education. CAP is a volunteer organization. Our cadet program has many facets, including but not limited to leadership, aerospace education, including STEM programs, and physical fitness. Part of our leadership program includes drill and ceremonies, and follows the Air Force Drill and Ceremonies Manual. Our cadets have participated in numerous parades with both color guard and drill team. We have also presented the colors at local baseball games with the Joliet Jackhammers and the King County Cougars. Our cadets have also worked with other events within Civil Air Patrol and at other functions, presenting and posting the colors. If you're not sure what the colors are, it's the flags. We are also slated to participate in the wreath laying ceremony at Lincoln Memorial Cemetery this December. This brings me to why we are here and what we can offer the Village of Joliet. We are here to discuss the potential for our squadrons to assist the retiring and reposting of the American flags for the City of Joliet. We would also be working with the local VFW to assist in the proper destruction of retired flags. Now to turn over to how that ceremony looks. This is something I'm a little more comfortable and familiar with. I have been with the program for nearly 20 years, actually a little over 20. I started as a cadet. I was on a drill team. The ceremony in retiring a flag is our cadets approach the flagpole in a four-man group. They respectfully salute the flag before lowering it. At that point, two cadets will approach the flagpole, lower the flag in a respectful manner. Once the flag has gotten down to the two cadets, one cadet will hold it on one end, the other will unclip it from the flagpole. And it all, obviously, this depends on how the flagpole mechanism operates. At that point, the two cadets will stretch out the flag. The other two cadets will come in, and then they will fold it in a military-style fashion, much like you would see at a ceremony that they do for, you know, any other ceremony that the military does. They do it a lot with funerals. At that point, the flag will be retired to one person to hang on to, and then we will collect them and bring them to the VFW hall for destruction if that is what's necessary. Raising the flag is done in a similar fashion. Our cadets will have the flag already prefolded. They will then unfurl the flag in a respectful manner in a four-man group. They will clip the flag to the flagpole and raise it in a ceremonious manner. Once that is achieved, before retreating from the flagpole itself, they will salute the flag. That's pretty much our process. I do have three of our cadets that are part of our drill team here today. I have Sergeant Sarah Schofield, Sergeant Holly Thatch, and Sergeant Matthew Schofield, and they'd be willing to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Well, thank you for coming forward, and then where do we sign off?
You let us know. You tell us when and where, and we can make it happen. As I said, we can do it collectively between both our squadrons. My understanding is you have at least 10 flagpoles. That's something that's easily accomplished. So, let us know. I'm local. I know Dave Brainer, who is also a member of our squadron. I have a lot of respect for him. You can get contact through him, or you can contact me directly.
We will. And just let the council know, Dave Brainer, obviously he's a city employee. He came to me with the idea. So, thank you so much for coming forward. I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under Mayor, Mayor Odakir appointments. The mayor is recommending Sarah Stovall, Bill Habiger, and Candace Johnson to be appointed to the Joliet Historic Preservation Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Before I take my vote, you know, these two ladies are always a part of this room. So, Mayor, I am so glad you found something for them to do back there. And I vote yes.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
I would echo Mrs. Councilwoman Gavin's comments. Thank you. I vote aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Motion carried. Citizens to be heard on agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none. Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council committee reports. CTIS committee report.
CTIS committee met on November 28th at 8:30, and comprised of Councilman Pat Mudrin, Councilman Betty Gavin, and myself as the chair. And I might add that David Brainer, who's brought that to the mayor's attention, is also the director of the IT department. So, he's been a breath of fresh air here, and I'm sure a lot of the employees, which I've been told, is, are very pleased with him. There's some purchase orders on the agenda for this evening, and I'm going to have Anthony Ardalino, who's also in the IT department, come up and explain them briefly. If I'll have any questions, you can ask him. I figure, why should I tell him and then have him go over it again? So, make it simple.
At the CTIS meeting, there's basically three items on the agenda for today. Two of them, we spoke about previously with some reallocation of some funding for the LAN and the WAN. I know it's kind of hard to say there. But basically, what they are is two bids that went out. The bids that came in were under what the engineering estimate was. On the LAN, which is your switches that connect the things within the facilities, we were 3% under the engineering estimate. The bid was $467,000 on that one. And on the WAN, which is basically connecting the multiple facilities throughout the city footprint, we came in 22% under the engineer estimate of $420,000 at approximately $328,000. Both of those council memos are up for your approval today. And then the third item that was discussed at the CTIS was an amendment to an existing purchase order. Basically, the IT department utilizes the professional services. We are looking to add three additional approved vendors on the existing purchase order. So, this is a cost-neutral, no additional expense to the city. Those three are Client First, Hegemony, and York to add the purchase order. That's Council memo 595-16. So, if you have any questions about any of those, I can go into details or just kind of eye-level view.
Questions?
Counsel?
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay. That would conclude our report, unless any committee members have anything to add to that.
Nothing.
But we're saving money, so just put that out there.
Good work.
That concludes our report.
Land Use and Legislative Committee report.
Yes, excuse me. The Land Use and Legislative Committee met last Monday, November 28th at 9:30 a.m. here in the council chamber. The members, along with myself, Councilwoman Quillman and Councilwoman Brewer, also Councilman Mudrin was in attendance, and the mayor popped in for a minute. I saw you back there in the back, man. We had a lengthy agenda. Our first item on the agenda was the, and some of these items was actually discussed yesterday, the abandoned residential property registration ordinance. And the committee moved to table that for further discussions as it was talked about yesterday. There was some concerns that we want to try to get more information and maybe be able to work with the residents as well as the neighborhood. Mr. Sheridan spoke on it yesterday, so hopefully, along with Alfredo Malesio, the city staff, and the neighborhood associations, and the realtors, we can come to some type of agreement on dealing with the abandoned residential properties. Also, Alfredo Malesio gave us an update on the consolidated plan. He went through that pretty thoroughly. One of the items on the agenda tonight up for vote is Inspector General has brought some changes for the amendment to the Inspector General ordinance, and the committee moved to approve that with the recommendation of approval to the council. Also, on the agenda this evening is the amendment to the city code for adding section two for the keeping of dangerous animals, exotic animals, and the farm animals. And our city attorney, Marty, seemed like he did a lot of research on this particular agenda item, and also the council moved to approve the amendments for this, for the amendment for this ordinance. Where we at? We had some discussion of the removal of the half-price fee for charitable organizations. Mr. Dave Mackley brought that, and the committee kind of asked Dave to refer back to our city manager for more discussions on that. It's something to do with the software that is used to calculate or to put out the fees, and the committee didn't want the charitable organizations to have to pay anything different than what they've been paying. So, that will be brought back to the committee perhaps, or maybe to the full council, depending on the discussions at the staff level. Also, Mr. Mackley spoke with us about contractors' license, and we, the committee, asked him to get more information to bring that back. It's a license fee for contractors that we haven't been charging here, in light of the other municipalities in our area have been. So, that was an item that Mr. Mackley had brought to our attention, that he would be bringing more information back to us. The fireworks fines, I believe that would be on our agenda. The committee moved to approve that, recommendation of approval to the council, to increase our fireworks fines. This year, seeing that it was a lot of complaints from our residents, so the committee have come back with the again for approval to council, and that will be up tonight for a vote, for a recommendation. Also, there were some discussions with Mr. Schwartz about mobile food vendors, and it was just some initial discussion in terms of mobile truck vendors in certain areas here in the city. So, the committee asks also for him to move forward with getting more information and come back to the committee in the near future on that. As well as also, there was discussions on seasonal farm stands here in the city. So, he would also be getting more information and bringing that back. It was some lengthy discussions on both of those items, the mobile food vendors as well as the seasonal farm stand. The flag display ordinance, our city attorney, again, that was some discussion, and it had been some discussions in our previous council meeting. So, that was sort of not discussed in detail, because we had discussed that previously at the, here in the council. Mr. Malesio came back again and discussed with us the blight reduction program here in the city, and there's been about 12 buildings demolished under this program, and 14 more scheduled to be demolished of some of these blighted properties here in the city. And I think I covered everything that I can remember. Council, committee members?
It was the longest meeting ever.
Yes, you did. But I would.
I think you covered everything.
I would suggest in the future, our agenda be half of that, so that we can really discuss it, because that was two-hour meeting, two hours, so. But thank you, Mr. Chair. You did a good job.
You did.
Thank you. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee report.
I'm going to be a lot quicker than that. I guarantee you, yeah, yeah. The Public Safety Committee meeting met this evening. The Public Safety Committee consists of Councilman Hug, Councilman Hernandez Brewer, and myself. We had one item that we discussed that's on your agenda today. It's Council memo 577-16, and it's basically the purchase of extrication tools for the fire department. We're going to purchase two sets. It's in the amount of $48,710. It is budgeted, and the vendor is Genesis Extrication Equipment. And, Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Public Service Committee report.
Public Service Committee met yesterday, December 5th, right here in the public, the council chambers conference room. Members include Councilwoman Gavin, Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer, and myself. We had spirited discussions about such things as bio-solid waste, blended phosphates, and sodium hypochlorites. If somebody wants to discuss that further, let me know. Otherwise, I'll just point out that it was a lot of housekeeping. All the contracts, change orders and bids were in order, including one that would be the highlight, which is going to further advance our one-year plan to take down all the ash trees. This one will address ash trees that are extremely, or trees, dead trees that are extremely large, or in dangerous situations like high wire, you know, tension wires and electrical wires. So, all of that, it was general housekeeping, and it all moved forward for recommendation for approval on tonight's agenda. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I show no other reports. Under consent agenda, approval of minutes. It's recommended the minutes of the special meeting held on November 10th, the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on November 14th, and the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 15, 2016, stand approved as recorded. Council memo 555-16, regular payroll for September 30th through October 13th, 2016, Council memo 556-16, regular payroll for October 14th through the 27th, 2016, $3,265,583.91. Council memo 557-16, regular payroll for October 28th through November 10th, 2016, It's recommended said regular payrolls be approved. And Council memo 558-16, position vacancies. It's recommended the city manager be authorized to fill one secretary one position in community development with subsequent vacancies, and approve the updated legal secretary job description. Is there a motion to approve said consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under licenses and permit applications, Council memo 560-16, issuance of a Class B liquor license at 235 North Chicago Street for Joliet Junior College. It's recommended Joliet Junior College be issued a Class B liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 561-16, issuance of a Class B liquor license at 3021 Theodore Street, Unit D, Dealer's Choice. It's recommended Dealer's Choice be issued a Class B liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion seconded to approve. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 562-16, reclassification of a liquor license to a Class B at 201 West Jefferson Street, Will Joliet Bicentennial Park. It's recommended Joliet Bicentennial Park's liquor license be reclassified to a Class B license.
So moved.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We're not there yet, Larry.
I was just parking my car.
Under ordinances, Council memo 564-16, an ordinance adding Chapter 6, Section 10, Keeping of Dangerous Animals, Exotic Animals, and Farm Animals of the City of Joliet Code of Ordinances, defining and regulating dangerous exotic and farm animals and primates. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
I have one question, and I don't know who wants to address it. I understand in this situation that the, first, the owners of the pot-bellied pig did get a petition from the neighbors, or signed a petition from the neighbors approving that they had no problem with it. And if that's the case, can we add that on, that they do that in the future with any, with any of these animals? Marty, I'm going to ask you to come forward.
I've seen this done before.
Apologize, the Metra, there was an issue in the Metra, so. The issue with having something like that is, it would probably have to be more like a special use if we were to do something like that, because then we would have, as a city, to define where the boundary would be. It would be immediate neighbors, or, you know, two houses down, or a house across the street. You know, how far would the circle be, and then how many people within that circle would have to object? The subdivision sizes are different, so it's something that would be very difficult to implement, so.
Thank you. I vote aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
No.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Motion carried, 7-1.
That's okay.
Council memo 565-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 7, Section 2-181D, E2C, and 2-183, the City of Joliet Code of Ordinances, amending the powers and duties of the Inspector General. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
I vote no on this. I feel that Inspector General has enough power now, and we are the elected officials that can give money out or take money back from any of the organizations, and I feel that too much government is always bad, and I vote no.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Motion carried, 7-1. Council memo 566-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 21-15, Fireworks and Firework Novelties of the City of Joliet Code of Ordinances, adding a minimum $500 fine for violations of the fireworks ordinance. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Move to approve.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Before I vote, I want to just reiterate what we said at the committee meeting level. This fine seems steep, but there's been so many fireworks, and they're not fireworks, they've been quarter and hastings of dynamite, that just is ridiculous. It's like a war zone, anytime there's a holiday or a celebration. And we would, we said be zero tolerance if they're stuck, if they're caught with dynamite, and we would leave it to the hearing officer, whether they wanted to impose a $500 or a $750 fine, depending on the offense of the fireworks that they use. So, therefore, I will vote aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, Council memo 568-16, a resolution approving an agreement with the City of Joliet and the Heritage Corridor Convention and Visitors Bureau, and approval of the annual summer media campaign, and DE/CEO IOT International Grant Match. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Been motion seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Gurl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudrin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 569-16, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a paratransit local share agreement with PACE, and to apply for grant funds available under the Title 20 of the Social Security Act. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.[1697.41]
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy dash sixteen, a resolution pertaining to city work on state highways. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron. Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy-one dash sixteen, a resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the Osgood Street, Second Avenue roadway project. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy-two dash sixteen, resolution temporarily adjusting the monthly parking rates for college/university students. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy-three dash sixteen, a resolution authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with United Way of Will County. It's recommended said resolution be adopted. So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy-four dash sixteen, a resolution accepting dedication of a public utility and drainage easement for a water main at Cadence Premier Logistics located at twenty-fifty South Chicago Street. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo five seventy-five dash sixteen, a resolution accepting dedication of a public utility and drainage easement for a water main at Amazon Distribution Facility located at two oh-one Emerald Drive and two-two-five-zero South Chicago Street. It's recommended said resolution be adopted. So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Affirmative.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Yes.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Sorry, I was getting hypnotized.
That's okay. Under bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council memo five seventy-seven dash sixteen, purchase extrication tools for the Joliet Fire Department.
So moved.
Council memo.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
You go through all of them, right?
I go through all of them.
I forgot this, I forgot this part.
Council memo five seventy-eight dash sixteen, award contracts for the twenty-seventeen BioSalads Disposal Program. Council memo five seventy-nine dash sixteen, award a contract for the Blended Phosphate Solutions Purchase, twenty-seventeen. Council memo five eighty dash sixteen, award a contract for the Manganese Sulfate Solution Purchase, twenty-seventeen. Council memo five eighty-one dash sixteen, award a contract for the twenty-seventeen Sodium Hypochlorite Solution Purchase, twenty-seventeen. Council memo five eighty-two dash sixteen, award a contract for the Sodium Permanganate Solution Purchase, twenty-seventeen. Council memo five eighty-three dash sixteen, award a contract for the twenty-seventeen Wastewater Treatment Plant Refuge Disposal Contract. Council memo five eighty-four dash sixteen, award a contract for professional services for radiological testing for the Utilities Department, twenty-seventeen. Council memo five eighty-five dash sixteen, award a contract for the Well Twenty-D Rehabilitation Project. Council memo five eighty-six dash sixteen, award a contract for the Well Twenty-Three-D Rehabilitation Project. Council memo five eighty-seven dash sixteen, award a contract for the Well Thirty-D Rehabilitation Project. Council memo five eighty-eight dash sixteen, award a professional services contract for the Wooded Creek Sound Wall Study, twenty sixteen. Council memo five eighty-nine dash sixteen, award contracts for tree removals due to the ash-bore devastation. Council memo five ninety dash sixteen, award a contract for the Network LAN Refresh Phase One. Council memo five ninety-one dash sixteen, award a contract for the Network WAN Refresh Phase One. It's recommended council memos five seventy-seven dash sixteen through five ninety-one dash sixteen be approved.
So moved.
The motion is seconded to approve. Almost there. Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Just one question to the clerk, um, Krista, when you were a young woman in high school, did you ever think you'd have a need to pronounce sodium permanganate in your life?
No, it's bringing back bad chemistry. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments, council memo five ninety-three dash sixteen, approve change order number one and payment request number two and final for the Ashford Place Subdivision Public Improvements Project, twenty sixteen. Council memo five ninety-four dash sixteen, approve change order number three for the Osgood Street, Second Avenue roadway project. Council memo five ninety-five dash sixteen, approve contracts for information technology IT professional services. And council memo five ninety-six dash sixteen, a revised council memo was sent to you earlier today, changing it from a change order number one to, it should be approved change order number two for the multiple-year EAB tree replacement program. It's recommended council memos five ninety-three dash sixteen through five ninety-six dash sixteen be approved.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Mudron.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Motion carried. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to speak to you this evening about the Rialto Square Theater. As you know, a constant mantra we hear is, save the Rialto. So, the city saved the Rialto in March this year when we advanced the quarterly budgeted amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and directly paid, made sure a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that was paid to the state and federal government for unpaid payroll taxes. Then in April, the city asked the Rialto Board to allow the city access to their records and financial information before we distribute any additional funds. When they refused, they were told that the city would not contribute any future funding. Then again, the city saved the Rialto later that month by paying the two performers scheduled, uh, directly so that the Rialto did not have to cancel these shows. They didn't have the money to refund the residents or customers that had purchased tickets. The Rialto Board selected a third-party vendor in August to run the theater, knowing that their proposed operational model had an annual deficit. Three days before I presented the proposed budget to council on November first, without, uh, any funding for the Rialto, Venue Works sent a letter requesting five hundred thousand dollars. And then finally, last week, council received a proposed intergovernmental agreement from the Rialto, requesting us to commit funding for four years. I have a proposal that I'd like to, uh, talk to you about, considering how the city can, again, save the Rialto. What I propose is adopting a resolution asking our senators, state senators and representatives, to introduce legislation that transfers ownership of the Rialto Theater and their properties to the city. The city will, uh, sell the office buildings that aren't part of the theater to the private sector. Will pay off all the bills that the Rialto Board has approved for payment but have not paid, and will assume the renov, the renovation loan obligation of approximately two point four million. Will manage the non-concert events like weddings and recitals and enter into contracts with Harrah's and other entertainment vendors, vendors to put on concerts and performances. And will include the Rialto buildings in our engineering consultant's facilities evaluation contract currently underway to evaluate the physical condition of the theater and the buildings and what and when the capital improvements are required. We want the foundation to continue and work closely with them because they qualify for grants that local governments may not qualify for. This proposal to me seems like a natural progression of the commitment the city's made to the downtown. We own the baseball stadium, the building in Wright Field, Union Station, soon a new train station, and a new bus station, along with the historical museum. If the city's going to move forward with the investments, uh, to implement the downtown plan, we have to assure that concerts and, uh, other performances are scheduled at the Rialto. Uh, this, and, again, the implementation of the downtown plan includes the redesign and rebuilding of Van Buren Plaza. Uh, we need to make sure that the doors of the Rialto Theater aren't locked during the events. Plus, we all know that the success of the restaurants in the downtown are dependent upon the success of the Rialto. So, and, and I'm going to state the obvious and conclusion, which is, this is not a proposal for this year or the next four years, but forever. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
New business step for financial recommendation?
Business? Yeah, actually, you know, Mayor, and I should have mentioned in my report, and you're supposed to remind me. We were gonna ask the, the council to discuss something, wasn't it? Uh, I'm sorry, man. Just to get some feedback, uh, the mobile food vendors.
There was another meeting at that part.
Oh, I'm sorry, you went, it must have been.
I couldn't remind you, sorry.
I was supposed to.
Off the hook.
I knew somebody was. Mr. Schwartz, as I had mentioned in my report, had, uh, discussed with us about mobile food vendors. And I know some, a couple of years ago, we, we did something with the food trucks. Well, we, uh, I don't, I want to use the right word, uh, what was the word? That we not outlawed them, but they're no longer allowed in the city, the food trucks. We wanted to bring them on, so, uh, he, he had an idea of bringing them back maybe into, in some of the, uh, industrial areas. So, uh, am I, am I kind of giving you a picture of what we was discussing at the committee?
Yeah, we were talking about.
And we said we would do it during new business, to kind of get a feel from the council because Mr. Schwartz wanted to know what direction he should go.
There were so many different options. There was one where they said, um, that, and I personally liked this one, that they said if they were to allow it, it would only be through, uh, current restaurants here. So if, so there was a restaurant that wanted to have their, their food truck in a certain area for whatever reason, uh, whether it be like in front of the county building during lunch or something, it would have to, so it didn't interfere with the current business owners downtown. That would be the way we would, we would do it. There were plenty of, uh, different options, but that was one that stuck out in my mind, I know. So we wanted to know if, if anybody had any opinions on that.
I, I have a question for Marty, I know he's in the back. Are you familiar offhand with what the current ordinance says about food trucks?
Yes, the current ordinance prohibits them. So, the, we, the city's actually been approached by some of the, uh, businesses out on the south side of town, the, in the industrial area, to, uh, allow some of the mobile food trucks out in that area to help with all the, the intermodal areas. So, and then the, kind of the idea was to talk to council to see if there was a, a general consen, and not necessarily consensus, but is there something that maybe the city then should prepare and then offer up to the Legislative and Land Use Committee and then come before the city as a whole, the council as a whole. But before we did that, we kind of wanted to get the feel of the rest of the council.
Yeah, I also have been approached by potential vendors on this issue, so probably it's something we should address.
We also were discussing the, um, removal of the petition. Like you said, we were gonna get some insight about that as well. Uh, or removal of, uh, discount for the charitable organizations.
Right, but.
Brought that up, I don't know if that's something that we, we were gonna discuss here, or how that works.
Right, I, I believe we, we left it that Mr. Mackley was gonna speak with, with city manager, Mr. Ha, and they were gonna.
I'm just trying to remind you now, I don't want you to get upset. If I can give you your reminders.
Those was the two things, it was the, uh, mobile food vendors or the food trucks and the seasonal farm stands that, that Mrs., you know, Schwartz wanted to kind of get a feel from the council on if we should open it up more. I believe it was at least one farm now that has a farm stand that's, you know, located within the city, you know, off-site from the farm. But I think the, uh, as, as Marty said, there's, the city been approached by vendors, as the mayor said, of, of putting food trucks in certain areas, in the industrial areas. But it was some concern about our current restaurants being affected by it if they're in the, uh, downtown area.
I have been, whoops. I've been approached by a couple of, uh, food vendor, uh, truck owners that, uh, were asking the same question. What was the ordinance, why weren't they allowed? And also, if there is any health requirements, I'm sure, I don't know if they are licensed by the Health Department and that sort of thing, so there is some interest out there, uh, from some entrepreneurs that would like to do business in the city, in certain locations, so. Would love to get some answers for them, for that.
Maybe put this to the committee and start the ball rolling. Okay, so, so, right.
In census, then?
In census, okay.
In census, okay. Are we gonna do those together, the seasonal stands and the food truck vendors, are we separating them?
Right, I believe that, yeah, they will be separated. I believe maybe Marty or, or Mr. Schwartz can, can, can determine that. But it sounds, seems like they would be separated, but, uh, he's gonna get more information and, uh, in terms of, you know, locations and, uh, where they could be at, and, and bring that back to committee, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Thank you. New business, Pat?
Nothing.
No, thank you.
Public comments, is there anyone present that would like to speak on our public comments?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, Denise Mead again, we're talking about flags, but actually I've got a, a different conversation that I needed to address with you. I've spoken some with Larry and with Councilman Hug and Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer about this. And I believe, Mayor Order Kirk, you've been kind of clued in on this as well. After the council meeting, um, two weeks ago, I had an opportunity to speak to a gentleman by the name of Rick Randall. He is the founder of a program called Flags of Valor. On September eleventh, twenty sixteen, the fifteenth anniversary of nine eleven, Flags of Valor posted over seven thousand full-size American flags on a hill in St. Louis in honor of all of the fallen since nine eleven, including those who fell on nine eleven. Each flag had a photo and the dog tags of the fallen service member. There was about three hundred families that came out over the week that the flags were up. And at the end, on nine eleven, at the end of the day, all of the flags were taken down ceremoniously, they have been folded. Most of the flags were claimed by individual family members in honor of their fallen, their fallen hero. But there are some that the families were not aware, they were not available, and sometimes families aren't necessarily involved enough to want to do this kind of thing. As a result, there are twenty-eight flags of Illinois's fallen soldiers that have been unclaimed as yet by the families. So I'm involved with this project, and one of my jobs with this project is reaching out to those twenty-eight families, tracking them down. out to those 28 families, tracking them down. This information is not exactly publicly available, but there, you know, there are lists, there are ways of doing that, and my job is reaching out to them and asking them if they would like to participate in a very special opportunity that the Flags of Valor would like to extend. As, and a couple of council members are aware, the Flags of Valor would like to donate the 28 flags from Illinois' fallen heroes to the city of Joliet to display. This is a huge honor. Now, Councilman Hug and Hernandez Brewer both were a little bit overwhelmed, as was I. This is, this is an incredibly generous offer. These aren't just regular American flags, not only because they were flown in honor with the name and the face of one of Illinois' fallen, but because they're made by a company called Anan Flag Company. It's the oldest flag company in America. They're, the Anan Flag is the one that was raised at Iwo Jima. Anan Flag is the one, the company that made the flag that went to the moon. And Anan Flag is what draped Abraham Lincoln's casket as he was brought back to Illinois. So, the significance of these individual flags on every level, what they stand for, where they come from, and what they mean. What the Flags of Valor Project would like to do is to, as I said, they want to donate the flags. I've now just received the names of all 28 of the Illinois' fallen. I can tell you, there's going to be a few of the families who will not be able to come forward. Every one of them has a story. In one instance, the fallen soldier was an immigrant from India. He'd come here on his own at 18-years-old to live with an uncle and volunteer to serve. His family, the rest of his family, never lived in this country, so there is no one here to stand for that flag. So, at the suggestion of Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer, we would like to have, and this is the reason I want to talk about this now, is to get the information out, just like now the junior ROTC is aware, we would like to have a veteran, preferably from one of the older generations, as well as a current OIF veteran, to stand and receive that flag after it has been flown in honor, and then take the flags for those who do not have family or whose family cannot participate, and have the city of Joliet send them to their hometown, wherever in Illinois it is, so that their hometown, or their library, or their school can have that remembrance of their hometown and local hero. For Joliet to be able to participate at this level in this incredible project is, it's just, it's astounding to me. The generosity of this Flags of Valor program and project is amazing. I know that the last conversation, the emails were with the city manager, Jim Hock, that the flags are going to be shipped to Joliet. They have not yet been shipped, from what I understand, because this is all done on a volunteer basis, so they were literally raising the money to ship 28 folded, properly folded, flags to city of Joliet for Joliet to receive. One of the things that was suggested, once the flags are received here, is that Councilman Hug had said that perhaps the city, and I think this is a wonderful idea, can get some kind of a plaque with something about their, their, the Illinois' fallen hero for when the flags are displayed, and that those plaques, I think, should remain here in the city hall at Joliet and displayed in honor of what the city has been able to participate in and as part of the greater community and the state of Illinois. These, these flags, as I said, are going to be donated, and because of their quality, they can be flown. Once they're flown, they can't be flown again, so retiring them and returning them to the families or to their hometowns is, I think, the appropriate response and the appropriate action with them. Councilman Hug had also recommended that the city of Joliet perhaps move forward, moving forward, making sure that we have sufficient flags on hand and replacing them. And what do you do with the flag that you're replacing that may not actually be in terrible condition, but it's being retired on schedule? There is another program, and it's called Stars for Troops, and Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer, I had mentioned this one to her, and this one is kind of a hit you in the, in the feels. It's a program where they take, they take an American flag and they respectfully disassemble it, and each star from the flag is put into a package, and junior ROTC programs, Boy Scouts and various organizations then take those individual stars with a little piece of paper, a little, like a laminated piece of paper explaining that this is a star from an American flag that can no longer be flown, but it's given to individual service members, veterans, our police, and our firefighters in recognition and respect for their service. And I think that this is another area, another part of the program overall, that the city should become involved in on a permanent basis. So, any questions?
The only thing, I mean, the work you've done is way beyond what we could expect for this, and we're glad to be able to do something, and it's not just one person. Everybody's had their say and their input in this and tried to help. But I will say that I, and I don't, I can't speak for everyone, but there has to be a way for us to be able to pay for that shipping for these flags. If they're trying to raise the money to ship them to us, and they're not, they refuse to charge us for them, we offered to try, and they won't charge. Can we, can we find a way to...
It is a 501(c), and they probably would take a donation, but that's not what this is about.
I understand, but, but in, I, I...
There is, there is a way.
Okay, I was going to say, I don't know how to, we got, I want to do that, and I'm sure everybody else, I hope everybody else would be okay with that.
Thank you. Councilman Hug, Councilman Brewer, you've been kind of on top of this. If you could stay and keep the council updated, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at our public comments?
Robert Hernandez, as a former warehouse worker, one of the things that you want to consider with your mobile food vendors is they go into a lot of the warehousing areas, because there's a lot of warehouses, you have hundreds of them here in Joliet. They have thousands in Bolingbrook, where I used to work at, and those vendors go on property, and those workers work hourly, and they only have a 30-minute break, so they can't travel that one mile or two miles or three miles to a McDonald's or a restaurant close by. So, they count on those food vendors in Bolingbrook, and they're very successful, and they mainly go to those warehousing areas so that those employees have an opportunity to eat outside of a bagged lunch. So, you might want to consider that when you're discussing your ordinance, because we do have food vendors who are stationary, as you know, and those I don't want to see anything happen to, because many of those are Hispanic food vendors throughout our city that are stationary on, on property of stores or restaurants that are already in place or have leased property. But again, with respect to food vendors that are mobile, you might want to consider in your ordinance, limiting them to, you know, industrial or warehousing areas to give those workers an opportunity to have some hot food. I know out in Bolingbrook, warehouse employees were standing in line waiting for them. So, you might want to take that into consideration when you're having your discussion, Chairman Morris, with respect to that issue. And as someone who opposed in the past purchasing or, like with the ballpark and with the waterpark, I think that the proposal the city manager has with respect to the Rialto is outstanding and should be given consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mary Babbage, Mary Cristobabbage. I'm a 1230 Buell, and Mayor Oderkirk and City Council. I just have a few words. Mary Cristobabbage, lifelong resident, born and raised in Joliet, a proud member of the Rialto Board. I ask that you, the mayor and the city council, to give us the money so we can run the Rialto. It's the jewel of Joliet, the most beautiful theater in the world, and any city would be so proud to have our Rialto in their town. I ask you, see the motel, give us the motel hotel money to support us and all the restaurants in our town. Today is St. Nicholas Day, so please give us our St. Nicholas Day gift to keep our Jewel of Joliet going and keep our downtown alive. I, I am against what you say, City Manager Jim Hock, and tonight propose for our Rialto, so please let us work together with Venue Works to move on. Maybe we need to talk. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all.
You too, thank you.
I just have a quick question. I was just wondering if you could...
Name and address, please.
1016 Jewel Flower Lane in Joliet. If you could verify that the Stalin Properties proposed rezoning in Sable Ridge off of Ridge Ridge Road in Joliet went through for the apartments.
Kendall, could you speak to that?
Yes, Mayor, there, there is no formal proposal for rezoning that came to the city for that project. Our understanding is that the developer has gone back to the drawing board to consider different housing types, so that's the status.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, next is mayor and council comments.
None right now, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that after a battle, this battle with cancer, a local resident that many are familiar with, Don West, did pass away early Sunday morning at the age of 64. For those, many of you already know who Don West is, and for those that don't, Don West was instrumental in, in starting the local Wish Upon a Star 38-years ago. Wish Upon a Star is a local charity organization that raises money to give wishes, gifts, to terminally ill children. He did pass away, as I said, Sunday morning, and visitation is 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday at Blackburn Gygrich-Suntag Funeral Home, 1500 Black Road, and the funeral will be on Friday at the funeral home at 10:00 a.m. So, again, if we could maybe just all have a moment of silence, since he did give so much to the youth of the community over the years. Then one other item, Mayor Krista. Everybody sees the beautiful tree that the mayor lit a week and a half ago, and, do we have it, Krista?
I'm searching.
Okay, and these things don't, they don't get there magically, and they don't fit in the back of an S-10 pickup, so they do need, was that a 30-foot tree roughly, Mayor? And so, there was trucks and cranes, as you can see, that were needed to both harvest the tree, transport it, and then put it up downtown, and that was done, and I want to get the information correct, give me one second here, Mayor. I wanted to give a thank you on behalf of the city to the two companies that were involved with that. The crane, obviously, as you can see up there, the crane was donated by Chileno Cranes, Chileno Heavy Equipment, and the truck and other things needed, labor needed for the harvesting was by ArborTech here in Joliet. They both donated the crane, the trucks and the crews, to harvest that tree and put it up, and I just wanted to say thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Following up a little bit with Larry, I'd like to thank everyone who came to the tree lighting and parade that Friday night after Thanksgiving. The weather was perfect and the attendance was outstanding, and thank you, everyone, for making it a success, and anyone who didn't make it, you have no chance next year.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Just also about the Christmas parade, I want to thank all those that put all the work and effort into making it a successful parade. I know it didn't happen overnight, it's a whole year of planning, and I think they deserve a lot of credit. And I'd like to respectfully ask for a closed session after this, Mayor.
To follow up on that, I, again, thank you to everyone who put in all the volunteers for the holiday parade. Also, thank you to the University of St. Francis and Dr. Arvin Johnson for supporting the parade and for their support of downtown, not only the Westside campus, but now the growing campus in downtown. So, thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your leadership. I want to congratulate Cornerstone, they had a very successful champagne luncheon last week at the Patrick Haley Mansion. As we all know, Cornerstone does a lot of great work in our city, so thank you again, Cornerstone, for your ongoing commitment to the people of Joliet. I was at a ribbon cutting last week, or this week, with Councilwoman Gavin for Wings Across America. Very impressive menu, including a couple items I hadn't tried before, so I would definitely recommend people, local residents, to give it a try. I think you'd be impressed with what they've done there. I'd like to thank the Hufford Junior High, they had an orchestra come into city hall and play Christmas ballads last week. They really were terrific, the young people, very impressive. I know a lot of city staff saw them, and people were coming and going, so thank you to Hufford, and great job to the young people in the orchestra. Last week, and Councilman Mudron, I know you were there, the CED gave their annual report in a breakfast at the Clarion Hotel. I think John Grueling will plan on coming in front of the council and giving this to the council, but a very successful year. Again, backs up the argument we've been making with our state and federal legislators about what's happening in Will County, and really, what's happening in Will County is primarily happening in Joliet. So, credit, of course, to the CED, to everyone on the city council, these are good times that we're living in, there's real economic development happening in Joliet. It's one of the really few bright spots in the entire state of Illinois, we should all be proud of it. And then finally, this afternoon, the Race Foundation had their annual ceremony. This was Scott Paddock, the chairman of the Chicago Line Speedway, along with Route 66 and their staffs. They gave out, they gave out over $30,000 to local charities this afternoon, including the $2,000 that I raced for this summer for the Miracle League of Joliet, so thank you to Sharon and Nick Farrow, they were on hand to accept the donation. Chief Benton, I know you were there, you also won your race. Did you, was your charity United Way?
Santa's Cops.
Santa's Cops, so it was a great, great event, and I do think we should have Mr. Paddock come in front of the council, be honored for what they continue to do for local charities here in Joliet. So, that's all the comments I have, and I guess executive session, Jim?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel, collective bargaining, land acquisition or conveyance pending or threatened litigation, after which the meeting will be adjourned?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve, Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Mudron?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hernandez Brewer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Motion carried.